A call to order the meeting of the Shawnee City Commissioners, September 6, 2011. Call roll please.
Stevens. Sims.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be given by Don Lynch, followed by the flag salute. Are there who wish to, please rise.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you this evening with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for the cool breezes and the cooler temperatures that you've sent our way. As we near the 10th anniversary of the September 11th attacks, we take time to remember those who've served in our community and our country, those who are continuing serving today. We thank you for their service, Lord, and we pray that you would bring an early end to war and conflicts around our world. We thank you for our leaders and we pray for their guidance, both at the national level, at our state level, and our local level, for all that they do to help better our community. We thank you. We pray for those in our community who are in need, who are grieving, who are ill and infirm, that you would take care of those needs, that you would just bless them, Lord, for you know their need and you're able to satisfy it. And lastly then, we pray for this meeting tonight, that as we go about doing your business against great community, that you would lead, guide, and direct us, that everything that we do here would be pleasing unto you, will continue to give you the praise and glory. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number one, consider approval of agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Sims. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, consider approval of consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item 2E.
Okay.
And I would like to ask you to go ahead and defer that. We're not able to pull together all the information you asked for.
Okay.
It won't make any difference.
No. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on any item?
I move we approve this consent agenda then.
Second.
Item 2E.
All right. A motion to approve the consent agenda, minus 2E.
Yes.
Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Sims. Correct. Okay. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 2E.
I just move we table it till the information becomes available to the attorney then.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Harrod to table 2E until the information is available to us.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Any other comments? Mary Ann, do you have a list of our concerns from the meeting?
No.
Okay.
That's part of the problem.
Okay.
So I'll try to see if we can put those together. I'll go back and listen to you then.
That too. Okay. As we move forward. Okay. All right. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three, citizens' participation. Want to sign the sheet? Tell us who you are.
Scott Warren. Good evening. I have had the pleasure of speaking before this body on numerous occasions in support of a soccer association needs and also particularly a sports complex. I was able to attend the airport public hearing, but did not speak at the time. I think that I'll just take a second to do that this evening. I want to speak in support of the sports complex, but particularly from an association angle. Something that has not been discussed or that we have not kind of put out there before the commission is, the associations, whether it's a baseball association or a soccer association or just youth sports in general, do not have the opportunity to grow because they don't have the facilities to grow. And I think that something that you consider when you look at the need for a sports complex is the success of the associations. The soccer association I'm more familiar with because of the years that we have served and that we've coached and that we've kind of participated in that program over the years, but also the number of people that can attend competitions and tournaments is really something to observe. But the associations themselves can only grow in this area when they have adequate facilities and places to play. So I would like you to, when you consider 11, I'd like you to remember that the associations and the youth of this area can grow exponentially when given the proper facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Rogers. I'm a retired Shawnee police officer injured in the line of duty May 10th of 1999. My reason here, my reason for being here tonight is to bring you up to speed on what has transpired since the August 1st meeting, since I was here last. My current vehicle, a 2001 Ford van equipped with wheelchair accessible equipment, was in need of and is still in need of replacement. However, it seems that the Band-Aid on the severed artery tactic is well-practiced in this situation. On August 12th, my vehicle was towed by Bunks Wrecker Service from home to Joe Cooper Ford of Shawnee because it would no longer run. While it was at the Ford dealership, it was test-driven to find the problem. While being test-driven, it broke down while the mechanics were driving it. It left them stranded on the highway for four hours in over 100-degree heat. Had this been me and my wife, help could not arrive quick enough before I would have had a heat stroke or even worse. I was denied a rental van for the first seven days of being without a vehicle and was told that I could not, I could only have transportation to a doctor or to the emergency room, but not for daily living. Apparently, if you're in a wheelchair, you have no life. On the 19th of August, a rental van was approved because it was realized that my vehicle would be in the shop for at least another week. We had to contact a third party to take my wife to Oklahoma City to pick up the rental. Although grateful for the rental van, it's the principle of the matter that my vehicle still needs to be replaced. After a two-week stay in the shop, we were able to get the van from the Ford dealership on the 27th and bring it home. After a $5,759.13 repair job, it is still a 10-year-old van, without a doubt that needs to be replaced. And the longer that the vehicle stays on the road, the more costly the repairs will be and the more unsafe it gets. The following day, August 28th, as we were getting ready to leave for church, you guessed it, the van would not start. Again, a not-so-reliable vehicle when my situation depends on a dependable wheelchair-accessible vehicle. The following day, the van was jump-started, taken to the repair shop, and both batteries were replaced. We now have at least a running vehicle, although not very dependable. I am grateful for the repairs that were done, but we all know that once a 10-year-old vehicle starts breaking down, the repairs start adding up. I would like to bring up an agenda item from February 5th, 2001. It reads, "Agenda item number 12, consider purchasing a handicap-modified full-size van for Jeffrey Rogers from workers' compensation funds. A motion was made by Vice Mayor Downing, seconded by Commissioner Harrod, to approve purchasing a handicap-modified full-size van in the amount of $64,173 for Jeffrey Rogers from workers' compensation funds. Motion carried." Although the purchase would be for a new handicap-modified Chevy 4x4 crew cab truck, the price is very close to the same as it was 10 years ago. There were seven 2012 Chevy crew cab 4x4 trucks approved and purchased for one department within the city of Shawnee, but no mention or approval for one vehicle that my life and daily living depends upon. As I have asked before, where am I on your list of projects? Thank you, and any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Warren Rutherford. I live 2801 North Bell, Shawnee. And I just want to ask tonight, I see all of these projects and et cetera for the park and the parks and everything else, but I see nothing for the water. In other words, renovating and/or replacing these old antiquated water lines that we have here in Shawnee. And I'm sure, at least positive, that our city employees are aware of the fact that these lines have long lived their effectiveness, especially in the hot weather. I'm an old pipeliner. I understand when it heats up, you know, the old pipe pulls apart, but I can't understand why, you know, with all these millions of dollars in projects, you haven't inflated the water, you know, the water lines that actually serve the city. I mean, it's just as important as anything that I can imagine. And it's so easy to renovate anymore with plastic pipe. I mean, you put in plastic pipe, you have no joints. It is not going to pull apart. You can also pull the new pipe, the new plastic pipe, inside the old cast iron, ductile iron, whatever it may be. I hope it's not lead pipe. This city is old enough, it very well could be lead pipe. But anyway, you just apply a, you run a, in old pipeliner terms, you put a pig in there and you shoot it through the existing pipe, pull a cable behind it, and it's a swedge behind that that breaks the old ductile iron pipe, and you pull a new plastic pipe in. Then you go back and tap into each individual city, you know, individual homeowner's location, and you haven't spent a ton of money digging a ditch and et cetera, you know? Let's assume that a block is, I'm assuming that there's about 500 feet per block, I don't know. Anyway, it's an easy pull for 1,500 feet, so that's three blocks in one pull. So you wouldn't even have to dig a ditch for three blocks. Okay?
Yeah.
But anyway, my question to you people is, please consider upgrading the water system in this fine town. We do have two lakes out here now. Water is treatable now out of both of them, so, you know, that's my concern, that's my appeal to you for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Fred Turner, and I guess I have a couple of things to talk about this time. I'm still very concerned about the unfunded pension liabilities of the city of Shawnee. I haven't seen anything in the newspapers anywhere talking about the unfunded pension liabilities of the city of Shawnee. Those are real liabilities that the city of Shawnee has to pay and ultimately the taxpayers have to pay. Right now, your non-union employees, it's at least $8 million and probably more like $16 million. I've asked several of the city commissioners, what is the unfunded pension liability for the firemen and the police, and I have yet to hear an answer, but I did hear that it's even worse than the non-union employees. I'm sure all of y'all that may be used to work, if you've ever worked for the post office, the main reason that the United States Post Office may not make their payment tomorrow is because their pension plans are out of whack. Of the $8 million or $6 billion, I'm sorry, they have to pay, about $5.6 billion is for their pension plans. I think it would take the entire half-cent sales tax that you're proposing to get the Shawnee pension plans in balance. The second issue is, I'm concerned about the timing of what might be an election on November 8th. I understand that the city commission has ordered a report or asked for a report from OSU concerning the economic viability or some type of summary about the sports park. Well, in the paper, it said it would not be ready until October. Today is September 6th. You have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow to talk about putting some type of resolution to vote to the citizens of Shawnee. Now, according to the county election board, whatever your election, your resolution is, has to be to them by September 8th, to be on the ballot by November 8th. Now, the election board in the state of Oklahoma is changing all the machines, and so there aren't any elections in the entire state of Oklahoma in November and January. Now, the sports park has been talked about for 10 years. Now, I would think you would want your economic summary before you put it to a vote of the people. Some of you are businessmen. Would you build a restaurant or build anything without some kind of idea of what type of revenue that would bring in? If you go along with the schedule to have November 8th as the voting date, it makes me think all these three meetings that you've had about these projects are nothing but a sham. Now, only you all can answer that, whether they're shams or not. So I think you should delay any vote to at least February because you don't have the study.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move to item number four, city manager's presentation of employee of the month to Bill Jones and the water department.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Jones has been making this evening.
Okay. Will you make sure that he receives his award and everything? Thank you. Item five, consider bids. A, Lake Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project, contract number COS-PW-11-03.
Okay, this item is the bid opening of our Lake Road Bridge Rehab Project, and previously the city commission authorized us to hire a consultant, Guy Engineering, they're the ones that prepared the bid documents and the plans and whatnot. We have four bids received. It's kind of specialty work. The first bid opened was from Wildcat Construction Company, Inc., out of Topeka, Kansas. Their bid was $663,409.50. Second bid opened was from PBX Corporation from Sepulpa, Oklahoma. Their bid was $630,319.30. Next bid opened was from CP Integrated Services, Inc., from Oklahoma City. Their bid was $645,401.27. And the last bid opened was from Meridian Contracting, Inc., out of Tucson, Arizona. Their bid was $659,600, and our consultant's estimate for the work was at $458,000. We're going to ask that this item be deferred to the next couple of meetings to see where we're at with the money. I don't know if we've got $630,000 budget on that project, but we'll see what goes. We'll tabulate the bids, see where the consultant missed on the estimate, and come back with a recommendation to you guys in about two weeks.
So moved.
Okay. A motion to defer to the next meeting by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 5B, rehabilitate runway 17-35, grade safety and construction connecting taxiway, AIP project 3-40-0088-0151, contract number COS-PW-11-01. Award deferred from the August 15th meeting.
Would you believe we need to defer it again?
Yeah.
We're getting close. The FAA has the actual numbers for the grant, and the applications have been filled out and signed by the mayor, and it's in the mail. So we're just, we'll wait for the, we can't award the bid until we get the grant award from the FAA. And I don't know if that will be by the next meeting or not, but...
How long is this bid good for?
The bid is good. I, you know, I don't know that the, the contractor's aware of the delays and everything, and they're fine with it.
So your recommendation is to...
I would, I would recommend to defer until we get the grant award, and then just, we'll come back with, and make a recommendation to award the bid.
When you're ready. So we don't have to keep putting it on here? Can we table it then? Instead of defer non-date specific?
I'd rather us just keep continuing it every time and not let it lapse at all. So let's just continue it to the next meeting and then, and, you know, everybody write your congressman. Get there.
All right.
So moved. Defer to our next meeting.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Sims to defer to the next meeting.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Any other questions about this? Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 5C, Beard Street Widening Project from Farrell to North Canadian River Bridge, contract COS-PW-10-03.
This item is from two weeks ago or three weeks ago when we had our bid opening. We tabulated the bids received. It's in your packet. The low bid was from All Roads Paving in the amount of $367,732.70. We've tabulated the bids, there's no errors, all the bonds, insurance, everything was in order. On this project, our estimate was at about $425,000, and we do have $450 budgeted, so we're in the money on this one, and we would recommend awarding the Beard Street Widening Project to All Roads Paving, Inc., in the amount of $367,732.70.
So moved.
All right. A motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 5C, Beard Street Widening Project from Farrell to North Canadian River Bridge, contract COS-PW-10-03.
This item is from two weeks ago or three weeks ago when we had our bid opening. We tabulated the bids received. It's in your packet. The low bid was from All Roads Paving in the amount of $367,732.70. We've tabulated the bids, there's no errors, all the bonds, insurance, everything was in order. On this project, our estimate was at about $425,000, and we do have $450 budgeted, so we're in the money on this one, and we would recommend awarding the Beard Street Widening Project to All Roads Paving, Inc., in the amount of $367,732.70.
So moved.
All right. A motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 5C, Beard Street Widening Project from Farrell to North Canadian River Bridge, contract COS-PW-10-03.
This item is from two weeks ago or three weeks ago when we had our bid opening. We tabulated the bids received. It's in your packet. The low bid was from All Roads Paving in the amount of $367,732.70. We've tabulated the bids, there's no errors, all the bonds, insurance, everything was in order. On this project, our estimate was at about $425,000, and we do have $450 budgeted, so we're in the money on this one, and we would recommend awarding the Beard Street Widening Project to All Roads Paving, Inc., in the amount of $367,732.70.
So moved.
All right. A motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. I'll call to order the meeting of the Shawnee Municipal Authority, September 6, 2011. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. A motion to approve the consent agenda by Vice Mayor Collier, seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Call roll please.
Collier.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very adjourned. We will now open up the Shawnee Airport Authority Meeting, September 6, 2011. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Winteringer.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll please.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very adjourned. We will now open up the Shawnee Airport Authority Meeting, September 6, 2011. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Winteringer.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll please.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, new business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Okay.[1703.54] Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good call. All right. We're recessed for a while. Okay.
We'll go ahead and get this part started. This is a special call meeting of the Board of City Commissioners, September 6, 2011. Call roll, please.
Stevens.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Item number one is public hearing to discuss street sidewalks, neighborhood revitalization, and public safety for the proposed capital improvement project list. We will follow the, basically the same format that we have followed in the other two listening sessions. So we'll start off with presentations, and then we'll move into the part where you come up here and tell us what you think. So please come up here and speak from here so that we can all see you. There is a sign-up sheet here, and we're just going to allow you to sign your name when you get up here. So do that, let us know who you are, and so we have a record of it. And then, we'll just go from there, and we'll be here as long as, as long as you have things that you want to say. This is listening, though, so I do want to remind you, this is not a debate or anything like that. So it's not, we probably won't get into, you know, "I disagree with you because." So feel free to say whatever you want. It's been, the past have been people speaking on both sides, and that's really good, and that's what we want. So we will get it started.
Okay, they're going to limit you to three minutes for your, for your talk up here. I was asking.
Hi, I'm Linda Peterson, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, and I'm here today doing a video to maybe help you understand some of the projects that the City Commission has been speaking about for the last few weeks. I'm so hopeful that this video will help you understand where we are and receive some input from you, because it's really important that we hear from the entire community. One of the things that I'm going to ask, it's probably the gift here today. Here it is, the end of August in 2011, and we have $50 million worth of projects. So where did they come from? Two and a half years ago, the City Commissioners got together and decided, started talking about what our vision was, what our goals were, and how we're going to get there. And one of the things that came up very quickly was, we really didn't have enough money for the basic services that the city provides. Police and fire, road and code enforcement, parks, the personnel and the operations that it took to provide those services, we really didn't have the funding for the services that we as citizens expect. So we looked at what our options were, and one of the things we could do is look at where those services need to be, and how many people we need to have in some of those departments. Figure out what that is from a financial standpoint. Go to the voters and say, "We need this amount of extra sales tax dollars to provide the services that you, that you as a community and we as a community want to have." The other option was to look at, are there some things that we could invest in? Are there some improvements we could make to, to some of our facilities that would make us be more efficient? And are there some things that we could do as additions that the end result would be an increased revenue stream that would provide for the extra services and the things that we really would like to see in our community? And that's the choice that the Commissioners chose. So two and a half years ago, we embarked on trying to decide what those projects would be, what those enhancements would be, what those additions would be. And we began talking to citizens, "What would you really like to have in this community? What can you see?" We had Citizens Advisory Board. We met with user groups of some of the projects that were coming up. We met with the staff and said, "In the next 10 to 20 years, what do you need? What do you need to be more efficient? And what of your infrastructure needs to be replaced?" And at the end of that, we came up with a list that included $200 million worth of improvements. And while that's kind of hard to swallow, we realized that that really is what we need. So then we started to prioritize that. The $200 million, what do we really need? And what do we as a community need for the first 10 years? What, what can we do to improve it and get the biggest bang for the buck? So we started again, talking to citizens, working with groups, talking with the staff to prioritize that list. And we did that. Then after that, we had a subcommittee of the Commission, three Commissioners that met to kind of prioritize how much of the $200,000 do we want to do right now? And that's where we are today. We have a proposal by the City Commissioners of $50 million worth of projects from two funding streams. And it's a sales tax increase, and it is a request for a property tax increase. And the projects that they have put forth, increase jobs, stimulate growth, and improve public safety. And those are the three things that they thought were probably the most important that would truly help this community immediately: jobs, growth, and public safety. So let's talk about what the projects are in there. We have the property tax portion, which is $30 million worth of projects. It includes $8 million worth of expo improvements. That includes the parking lot, building additions and expansions, RV cookup expansions, the bathrooms that need to be improved, there's a whole list, and the $8 million. The other is $7 million for public safety. That includes moving the police department into a different facility, expanding dispatch, doing those kinds of things so that possibly E911 could come to Shawnee as a regional resource. It includes $5 million worth of road and street improvements. It includes $5 million for economic development, the ability to, to go out there and get the businesses, the industry and the retail that we would like to see in this community. It includes $3 million for an aquatic center. And that would be the improvement at our current pool that we're looking for. There's a focus group that worked on that, is a whole revamp of that entire facility that makes it more family-friendly. It includes $1 million in neighborhood revitalization. You might just call that continuing our cleanup and demolition program that we've been doing for the last couple of years. It includes $1 million worth of sidewalk extensions and additions as part of our master plan and trying to implement that. And that's $3 million worth of projects. The other piece is a 1/2 cent sales tax for 10 years, and the project that's on that is $20 million for the development of 160 acres for a park. It's basically, we call it a sports park, but the sports park is not 160 acres. That's really only about maximum 2/3 of the whole facility, because it does include a 20-acre pond on it, includes walkie-trails, a playground, all sorts of amenities that someone like you, who maybe is not playing baseball right now, could still go out and enjoy the facility. So that's where we are, and those are the projects that we have right now. And this is the point where we want to hear from you. We want to hear what you think about these projects, and, and where you see the community going. And...
See, I had to do that back there. Good evening. I'm Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director. Wanted to talk to you a little bit about the proposed capital improvement communications needs that we have in the city. Next slide, please. Basically, we're looking at three projects in our project list. Upgrading our existing tower site with our radio system, adding a new tower on the northern part of the city, and upgrading our subscriber fleet. That is the radios that are in the police cars, fire trucks, emergency services vehicles, as well as the portable radios that are carried by our emergency services personnel. Next slide, please. Just to give you a little bit of background on this system, the city transitioned from a set of three 1971 vintage VHF simplex, which basically means one channel, base stations and one repeater, to an 800 megahertz trunked radio system in 1999. That was a significant step forward on behalf of the folks who were here in the community at that time, the City Commissioners, the emergency services personnel, looking at that. Basically, an 800 megahertz radio system is a blend of traditional two-way radio technology and computer-controlled transmitters. The system's main advantage is that the radio transmitters can be shared amongst the various departments, instead of everybody trying to vie for a crowded spectrum using old technology. With the aid of computer programming, we can allow them to share the system. The virtual radio groups, also called talk groups, are created in those radios and that software, which enable each department to have their own conversations, giving the appearances of everybody having many frequencies in their system, when in fact everyone is sharing only a few. And so it was a, a large technology leap forward in radio, and particularly on behalf of the City of Shawnee at that time. We were the third trunked radio system to be implemented in public safety in Oklahoma at that time, and only the second in local government in the state behind Tulsa. And so it certainly was, as I said, forward-thinking at that time. Basically, to enhance our coverage, in 2001, we joined in partners with the City of Tulsa and their network system, and the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety, their radio network, to form a wide-area network. That improves our coverage significantly, particularly as you go west and northwest in parts of our town, where there was not much radio coverage due to the tower proximity, tower location, terrain, and some other things. So certainly enhanced our coverage greatly by being able to join in that system. Additional emergency services, such as REACT, who would go to Oklahoma City, would be out of radio coverage, and until they came back well within the county lines, if they had another call that they needed to respond to, they would have to get back closer into the city. Whereas now, when they, when they get back into the ambulance at the hospital, they can check back in, see what other calls may be holding, and be diverted and speed up response times, certainly for that. So it's a great improvement for all the emergency services to expand that radio system coverage area. In the 10 years or so that have followed, since we joined into that wide-area system, the City of Edmond, the City of Norman, and the City of Owassup have also joined into a partnership with us in this system, and what we now call the Oklahoma Wireless Information Network, or the Oakwind System, larger area of coverage. And Steve, if you would click to the next slide, you can see that through the efforts of all of these entities, we have significantly improved public safety, radio coverage in the state of Oklahoma. And this, in the I-44 coverage area that you see there in red, we have seamless radio coverage for interoperability. So if a police officer, for instance, gets in a pursuit going outside of city limits of Shawnee, he's got radio coverage, or she has radio coverage, and is able to contact other agencies, and those can, radios can be patched, and everybody can, can work together to assist that officer. Whereas before, it would require a dispatcher to pick up a telephone, call somewhere, the radio calls would have to be relayed by dispatcher, another police department, or an OHP or whatever, and it delays the process, as well as puts the officer's safety in jeopardy because they don't have a radio coverage with our dispatch and our people who would be assisting with that. And some of you probably remember the disparate radio systems in Oklahoma City that, that created some problems with some pursuits that were being done by OHP and Oklahoma City at the same time. They couldn't talk to each other, and they didn't know what each other was doing, and certainly we unfortunately lost a couple of officers in Oklahoma City because of that. So this is enhancing that capability to have this coverage. The green area that you see there is now digital coverage that's available through that system. Again, we only are maintaining in Shawnee the, the chunk of the pie there that you see in Potawatomi Canyon, in our tower site, and our subscriber units. The other parts of that coverage are maintained by the State of Oklahoma, by the City of Tulsa, and the Cities of Edmond, Norman, and Owassup. So Steve, next slide, please. Again, some advantages that we have by going to this system include multiple agencies, being able to talk to each other now, basically on the same channel, through this coverage. So, so we understand and coordinate our activities better, and it improves efficiency and effectiveness, as well as responder safety. We have used Homeland Security dollars to fund a lot of this system, including for us in the City of Shawnee, Firefighters Act grant money, and Homeland Security grant money that we've used to purchase subscriber units. Those are those radios in vehicles and portable radios, walkie-talkies that our public safety personnel carry. So we've made every effort to maximize grant funds when available to help support that system, as it goes. In an agreement that we have between Sprint and X-Tel for basically rebanding the effort, we have, within the last year, been able to upgrade all of our subscriber units in emergency services, some in our utilities department and some in general government. So that's made us in better shape without having to pay for any costs, basically out of pocket, from the general fund with the City of Shawnee. So we continue to try to maximize those opportunities wherever possible. Next slide, please, Steve. Our repeater site here downstairs with the tower site out here in the north parking lot that you saw when you came in, is a seven-channel Motorola proprietary Astro 25 mixed-mode analog and digital site, which I know means a lot to UTEC-y people that are sitting there in the audience. Steve is shaking his head, and Tim Berg is shaking his head, and I understand that. But it, it is a proprietary system. Trunk radio systems use proprietary protocols and equipment. Now, that proprietary software has to be installed in the equipment, and you have to have ongoing maintenance of the trunk system, which requires specialized skill and technical staff, and that does, of course, add to some of the cost of that. But I would, I would tell you that the base stations that we're using now were installed in 1999. Our antenna height there, as you see, basically the, the radio signals are coming out at 1,239 feet. It's important to note that there is a shelf life to these radios. The manufacturer has a period of time for which they will manufacture a series of radios, and then they change because technology improves, and with, with the upgrades to both software and hardware that we see in technology, there is a definite shelf life, just as there is to any technology that you have now sitting in your home today. For our radios, the manufacturer will quit manufacturing those radios that we currently have in 2014. That means, at that point, there will be a finite supply of parts that we will have to be able to fix those base stations should something occur to them and some parts go wrong. So we're going to have to look at some point in time to replacing those, because we'll run out of parts availability, and the manufacturer no longer provides that. The controller, that is the, the computer part of the system, which ties all of these radios together and tells it what to do, that controller is no longer supported by the manufacturer. So we have been fortunate to receive a second-hand controller from the City of Norman. When they upgraded their system, they gave us their old controller. So we're able to cannibalize parts now for a while, should we have a problem with our controller. But there will be a point in the future where we're no longer able to do that. And so we have to look at those end-of-life issues for those radios. Steve, next slide, please. I mentioned the fact about coverage, and there are basically three things in addition to antenna height that are going to affect the, the power of your radio signal and where it's located. Those are terrain, foliage, and buildings. And if you'll note from kind of where we're at, and I did a survey this evening, there are about four plateaus between where we're at right here and the North Water Tower. The North Water Tower location being about 120 feet higher than where we're sitting right here today, down in, in the, basically the river basin. So you have four plateaus between here and that location. So you've got some hills and some valleys between here as you go north in town. As you go west towards the lake area, you're also increasing in your terrain, your height above sea level, so that creates some issues we have to deal with. Foliage and buildings, which will attenuate signal, also create some problems. So we do have some gaps, and you'll see on this coverage map, the areas that are not shaded in are some representative examples. If you'll allow it to just briefly here, this is state highway 18, US 177, I-40, for points of reference. So particularly, the farther north you go into town, sometimes we get into some coverage issues. I don't like talking about specific locations, because I don't want to jeopardize officer safety, but there are some gaps out there that we need to fill in, and that's where a north tower site will help us. A site that's on a higher terrain, that's able to, to come back in and bring signal into those areas that are not covered right now, will certainly increase officer safety by having... having increased coverage of the radio system. Next slide, please, Steve. Currently, our subscriber fleet, we have 90 mobiles radios, police fire and emergency management. We have about 100 portables, police fire and emergency management. We have a cache of 25 radios that we can run out to an emergency scene should a radio go bad, be dropped, lost, whatever. Those are available for disaster emergency response. We have 41 mobiles in utilities and general government, 25 portables in utilities and general government, and 20 desktop control stations around, like fire stations, the utilities window, places like that where we need to affect radio coverage with the departments. Next slide, please. Those radios also have a shelf life, as you'll see here. We have some that expired in 2006, some that expired in 2007, and then we have some current production models that are available with no end-of-life established. But we know generally that what Motorola has done in the past is about a seven-year timeframe on a family of radios, and that's about average before technology changes dramatically, and they go to a total redesign, basically, of radio systems. So it is Motorola's goal to have normally available replacement parts for five years past their end of life. And so if we can generally keep the current, or the most current, or the previous immediate family of radios in the emergency services, we have been able in the past to hand down those other radios as we replace them in emergency services to general government and utilities, and continue to cannibalize the radios that we have in our stock to make those last longer. So basically, we're getting all the use out of those radios that we possibly can through that process. Next slide, please. Additionally, I just wanted to throw in there so that you would know, our dispatch consoles in the 911 center downstairs are no longer supported as of December 2013. So our plan currently is to replace those with the next model, next generation of E-911 radio console, as part of a proposed public safety answering point remodel, co-location that you're going to hear a little bit about later on. And we'll be using, hope to use, 911 phones to pay for that. So that would not be, the dispatch consoles would not be a part of this process. Last slide, please, Steve. So, again, projected costs for our projects, upgrading the existing repeater site that we have here with the new base stations, approximately $350,000. Adding a north side, 1.15 million. And then upgrading the subscriber units as we can, some additional monies, basically 500,000 that's left over there. We've looked at, and had some questions about alternatives and advantages and things like that, why the cost. Again, when you're looking at combining two-way radio system with the computer, that certainly is going to increase your cost. And again, we're dealing with a proprietary system. There are only two manufacturers of 800 megahertz infrastructure equipment. So there's Motorola and Harris. We've gone with the Motorola solution, which is a very good solution. Harris is about the same in terms of price-wise, also offers a very good solution. So we're locked in, for a time being, to the Motorola solution. However, I will tell you, probably about 15 years down the road, there's a project that will allow us to go open architecture should it come to fruition. The manufacturers, the technology should be there, and the industry is working to open up that architecture. We're not there yet, and we won't be there probably in the next seven to 10 years. They're still rolling that out. So we do need to make some upgrades and some enhancements now to the system, and then hopefully the next generation after that, there will be some open architecture, which will help bring our costs down as well for that. There are some alternatives such as cellular, push-to-talk over cellular, voice-over Internet protocol, and so some people have said, "Why do we even bother continuing with two-way radio at all?" And I would tell you that emergency services are heavily invested in radio communications, our operations, our training, our mutual aid are all tied to radio operations, as opposed to those other technologies. Tempting to switch to those technologies would have far-reaching impacts beyond just performance and equipment cost that it would take for that. Two-way radios are simple ways of staying connected wirelessly, and that's an advantage. They are cost-effective. It keeps them a better means, far above other types of communication that are out there currently on the market. There is no per-minute call charge, so every time somebody keys up a radio, we're not paying a network provider every time we push to talk. Two-way radios are easy to use, push to talk, let up to listen. If you've got your radio set on the right channel, you're going to be able to talk to those folks, and then they're going to be able to hear you if you're in the coverage area. They provide broadcast, public safety-grade quality, which is different from the average consumer-grade quality that you and I experienced as we're driving down the streets in Shawnee and going to and from other locations where we've all been talking on the phone, even though we're not supposed to while we drive, and have had calls dropped. Anybody experienced that? Probably so. They provide, the radios provide a more efficient, more reliable communication system during emergencies, and that's why it's important for us to stick with that. For most of the history, two-way radio has been an analog medium. To this day, the vast majority of systems are still analog. We are in a mixed-mode analog and digital. The process is converting over to that. I'll tell you that the future of two-way radio is digital, because it provides greater efficiency in the spectrum. That means we can get more channels, more conversations, in the limited space that we have to use in public safety. And that's important as we become more and more interconnected with our neighbors. It's more reliable, it's easier to hear, easier to understand conversations, even at long range, and digital radio promises features and capabilities that we don't have today, such as longer battery life, the ability to include flexible privacy, where scanners will not hear important conversations that need to be kept guarded for security purposes, and combining voice applications with data, so we can actually send data wirelessly to police cars, fire trucks, and ambulances within the community as well. So, again, we're looking at those three things, the upgrade of the existing repeater site, adding a north repeater site, and upgrading our subscriber fleet. Thank you very much.
My name is Lieutenant Mason Wilson, and on behalf of the Chief of Police in the Shawnee Police Department, I want to present you tonight with a list of projects and needs for the Police Department. I guess you've already got it going for me, because I don't have to figure it out. You gave me a quick tutorial earlier, but I wasn't sure if I was going to remember it. The top priorities for the Police Department is to add officers, a new law enforcement facility, combine the communication centers, and, as Don talked about, solve the communication problems or the radio signals. The newest trend in crime, and with modern policing, the goal of the Shawnee Police Department is to solve problems for the community. It takes staffing and resources to be able to solve the problems of the community, because what happens with the lack of staffing and the lack of resources is we become more reactive than proactive, and we want to turn towards the proactive Police Department. The Shawnee Police Department will soon have 59 officers, which will be up to the full budget strength. That does include some officers that are funded by grants and outside funding. That is 1.9 officers per thousand population. The national average is 2.1 to 2.3 officers per thousand. If we were to have the national average here in Shawnee, we would have 69 officers without the additional grants or the additional funding right now. At current, the Shawnee Police Department, of course, is based downstairs, and our area, including the dispatch center, is 4,000 square feet. The City Hall was built in 1971, and at that time, there were 20 officers on the Shawnee Police Force, and the officers were in a 3,000 square feet of space. And of course, today, we're going to soon be at 59 officers, and we're going to be occupying 4,000 square foot of space. There's a study that shows that 2011, the current space allotment for that many officers, 59 officers, should be about 18,000 square feet. And an example is the Pauls Valley Police Department. They have 15 officers, and they are housed in an area which is 13,000 square feet. Kind of a simple approach to this is we're looking for efficiency. When we're talking about space for the officers, an example would be if we have three detectives working on separate cases, and you've got one interview room, and those detectives are waiting in line to interview, that's not as efficient as we could operate with the proper space. Same thing for officers doing paperwork or reports. If they're waiting for a station to go to do their report and complete it, then we're not as efficient. We're not getting the officers back out there to be proactive and to solve the problems of the community. The study shows that by 2031, that's a long time away, I think I might be retired by then, the number of Shawnee officers should be at 98 officers, and the space for that would be about 36,652 square feet, and that's just to maintain the 1.9 officers per thousand population that we have today. Stillwater PD, in the last couple of years, they built a new facility, and they did it the right way. I mean, they built a facility that, looking at those statistics, they could grow into, not spending money on a new facility that they're going to grow out of. They actually have an entire third floor of the facility that is unfinished at this time, but it's going to be there for future growth. And as we're saying, one should build for the future and not the needs of today. If you build to meet today's needs, you outgrow it by tomorrow. The projected need for 2031 is a 36,652 square-foot police facility. The estimated cost at today's cost is $7 million. And as we know, as time goes by and the years go by, everything gets more expensive. And so that's why we're looking at building something that we can grow into as a Police Department, instead of something we're going to grow out of. The Joint Communication Center, this county is too small to have two separate communication centers. Don knows a lot more about this than me, but I'm going to cover it briefly. The, joining the two communication centers into one is going to be useful, because they can join forces as far as the resources and the funding. It would all go to one place instead of spread between the two different ones. It's going to, again, we're talking about efficiency, it's going to create a more efficient communication center. And of course, it'll improve the safety and the security for the citizens of Potawatomi County and the citizens of Shawnee. And I know Don touched on this, and again, we're not going to jeopardize public safety or the safety of emergency personnel by giving exact locations. But there is a, there is a need for, we got the wrong slide up, so I'm just going to talk. There is a need for better communication up past 45th, north of 45th, basically, we'll say. There needs to be an additional tower or repeater placed on the north side of the county. And that basically, it affects the public safety of the community, it affects police, fire, react, response for everyone, as far as communication goes. So that is definitely one of our priorities, is to get the radio signals up north a lot stronger, so everyone can communicate properly. The North Kickoo Water Tower is one of the ideal sites, I guess, that has been talked about, to place a repeater or an antenna to solve this problem, and that solution will cost an estimated $1 to $2 million. Let me go back to that other one. The combination of the communication centers, combining the communication centers, one of the locations that they're looking at, or the location that they're looking at, is the basement of City Hall. And the reason for that is because of the safety and security of the communication center. It's my understanding that the basement of City Hall would be one of the safest places for natural disaster, or any kind of mayhem that could break out, so we still have our communication center, and everything's safe there. Saying that, that would be the right direction for the city and the county to move both communication centers into the basement of City Hall, which leaves no room for a Police Department. And that is why the police need to find a different location and a facility to fit our needs. Basically, like it says, I mean, storm threats, the whole reasoning is to keep the communication safe, because the communication is the center of emergency responses for anything. And I think basically, that's what we've got. Once again, priorities for the Police Department is we want to add staffing, we want to get a police facility, and a combination, combining the communication centers into one, and strengthen, which Don already talked about, the signal up north for all emergency responders. And that's what I've got for you. I appreciate your time. Thanks for coming out.
Good evening. My name's John Crowe Wiki. I'm a city engineer, and I want to talk a little bit about streets. What we're here tonight is not to talk about our annual street budget. Currently, we get about 2.1 to 2.3 billion dollars that go to our street improvement program. It barely covers our maintenance costs. For example, earlier this spring, we awarded a project at 1.4 million dollars, and it's an ongoing maintenance project. And some of the streets that we've done on that around town is we milled an overlay 10th Street from Kickoo to Harrison. We milled an overlay Center Street from Highland to Independence, and then from Independence to Federal. We also did some lake area roads where we've milled and overlaid at the lake area, Independence east from 102 to Drummond Road. We did Clear Pond from State Highway 102 to Stevens Road. Currently, the contractor for the maintenance project is milling Ryan Street from MacArthur to 45th. Also, as part of our annual maintenance dollars, projects are like what's going on out there at the Mall Frontage Road, where basically we hired a contractor, and for $248,000, we're getting to add a turn lane right there in front of Wendy's and Kentucky Fried Chicken and Aaron's right there, to alleviate that bottleneck and improve the turning movement into the Walmart and the shopping center areas. And just tonight, the City Commission awarded a project widening of Beard Street, basically, just to add a turn lane on the east side of Beard from Farrell to the bridge, and at a cost of $367,000. Now, I say that because our annual budget that's allotted to me just barely covers our ongoing annual maintenance operations, just to keep the streets in drivable and rideable conditions. But what we have, the city has done several years ago, they hired a consultant to come in and do a comprehensive plan. They had public hearings on that, and out of the study and comprehensive plan came a section on traffic and roadway improvements. And- And they developed a master thoroughfare plan for improving our arterial streets from existing two lanes to four lanes. Cost of these streets are more than what our annual sales tax money provides us, our third piece of sales tax. I'm just going to go over several of the streets that were identified on the comprehensive plan to do and to give you cost estimates to it and to just show you that some additional funding is going to be needed in order to improve the streets that need to be improved. The, and these aren't in any special order, but one of the items identified was Forty-Fifth Street from Kickoo to Harrison. That's currently an existing two-lane asphalt street with no curbs and gutter. And the capacity of the street as far as traffic is, will not accommodate the projected traffic usage as a result of continued growth and development. The solution that we've come up with is to widen the roadway to four lanes with turning lane down the center or divided median with designated turn bays at certain locations. And this is a mile-long street, so it's completely reconstructed with drainage improvements and storm steering and utility relocations. And the estimated cost is at three point two-five million dollars. Okay. Another one identified was a mile-long stretch of road, also Forty-Fifth Street, from two-lane, four-laning it from Harrison to Bryant. That's an existing two-lane and is predicted that it will not accommodate traffic as a result of development. It almost can't accommodate traffic today with the housing development that's screwed up there and with Emmanuel Baptist Streets expanding and Finley and Cook and, and activity is picking up. Solution on that project is also to widen it to four lanes with turn lane down center with designated turn base. And the estimated cost of that project is also at three point two-five million. The next slide is project that we had in there, but we have awarded that tonight with our annual maintenance cost and we can go to the next one. Kickoo Street from the Spur to Highland is phase two of an ongoing project, which early on, the city identified to improve Kickoo Street as a corridor to Main, Main Street to pull off traffic from I-40 and direct it down to our downtown business area and to make an attractive corridor. Well, the city has expanded Kickoo Street from I-40 to Forty-Fifth, five-lane with the help of the state. Since that was on the state highway system, ODOT participated, actually paid a hundred percent of the widening on that project. And the, from Forty-Fifth to MacArthur had been a four-lane from a narrow two-lane previously about twenty, twenty-five years ago. Currently, we're getting the current project from MacArthur to Kickoo Spur, utility relocation is underway on that right now. And it'll be a four-lane, also improvement with waterline, utility relocations. And ODOT has tentatively scheduled that for November leady, but I'm not sure it's going to make that yet. But the Kickoo Spur, the next phase would be from the Spur to Highland to also four-lane. The project would consist of a four-lane with improved sidewalks on both sides of the streets with handicap access, access and ramps and stuff. A relocation of a waterline, fourteen-inch waterline on that underneath the paving that everyone knows about because it broke several weeks back and we had some problems with that. Be improved storm steering and drainage improvements and improved intersections geometrics at several locations, basically at Benedict Street and also at Highland. And the estimated cost of that several months ago was four point five million. Next slide. Also identified on the master thoroughfare plan is to four-lane MacArthur from Harrison to Bryant. That's also a narrow two-lane street with many areas of base subgrade failure. Now, several years back, we did overlay it, but we didn't really address all of the base failures. We overlaid it with a two-inch overlay to provide smoother rideability for the traveling public. The solution to this one is also to reconstruct and widen it to a four-lane improvement. Estimated cost of that is three point two-five million. Another street identified on the thoroughfare plan was to improve Kickoo Street from I-40 to a half-mile south of Wolverine to a three-lane roadway with turning lane down the center, pretty much like what we've already done for the half-mile south of Wolverine Road already. That was done about, oh, eight years ago with state assistance on industrial access funds we got for that one. But this would be a continuation from that same three-lane template all the way to I-40. Cost of that would be two point nine-five million. That's costing a little bit more for that type of improvement. It's not curbing gutter improvement, but there is a sixteen-inch waterline that would have to be relocated on that stretch of road. Now, some other long-range items also identified was Bryant Street from Forty-Fifth to I-40 if that project ever comes about. Also, West Tech Road to widen three lanes from Kickoo to Leo. Now, that's just for three lanes, basically what's out there now, to widen it, to stabilize the base and overlay it with six to eight inches of asphalt. It's not a four-lane improvement. Estimated cost of that would be about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Also, Highland Street was identified to construct, reconstruct it to three lanes from Kickoo to Harrison at a cost of three point four-five million. Now, that's a little more costly because of all the utilities in the way and all the waterline relocation and some right-of-way that would have to be purchased on that street. Also, Kickoo, four-lane from Highland to Farrell, a continuation on for the Kickoo corridor concept from I-40 to Main. This was identified also to continue it on from Highland to Farrell, or would be Main to Farrell, actually, at a cost of three point eight million. Also, we've identified just to overlay as many streets as we could out the Lake Area. Right now, there's several streets that are gravel for mile stretches and we have to pay constant annual and daily maintenance cost to have it graded. And just to overlay all the streets out there and take care of that at one shot would be about two point six million. And the last road wasn't identified in the master plan at the time, but it would be a continuation of the south side, what I call the south side frontage road from I-40. It's really the road there by Honda, in front of the Honda facility, the wide two-lane collector street. But to continue, but to continue that on to Harrison had a cost of two point seven-five million. And these items here, these, these kind of roadway improvements are a little more costly during the neighborhood, three, three and a half, four million dollars. And under our current system of what we're funding, we feel like we just can't afford to do what we did in the past, although it, it did provide imp- input or impetus to give us Kickoo Street project. But years back, the city took a million dollars each year from our annual maintenance budget to put in the kitty, so to speak, to show that we had funding available to match or to contribute with ODOT's participation on getting the Kickoo Street project. And at the time, I didn't think it was a good idea because it took away from our routine maintenance operations. But now, as we're getting closer to funding that project and getting it let for bids, it turned out to probably be a good idea.
Thank you. Justin Erickson, Community Development Director for the city. And I'm going to talk to you briefly tonight about two of the smaller items dollar-wise that are on the improvement list. First one I'd like to talk about is sidewalks and trails, which is allocated at one million dollars under the current plan. Approximately three years ago, the city of Shawnee adopted the Shawnee Trails Master Plan. And that plan lists a variety of sidewalk and trail improvements. Some of those are sidewalks that are directly associated with a roadway project, such as, such as what we will be doing shortly on Kickoo Street. Others are more rural trails that might occur along a railroad right-of-way or perhaps along a wetland area or something of that sort. And that plan, which again, was adopted about three years ago, provides a priority list of those improvements. And so we have a, a list within that plan of probably about thirty segments, many, many miles of trails and sidewalks. Some of the items on that list include sidewalks along Independence Street, Union Street, Main Street, Farrell, an extensive trail network along the rail system through town, and other improvements along MacArthur and Kickoo, just to name a few. But basically, any of your, of your high classification, high-traffic streets, arterial and collector streets are included on that list. And the one million dollars, when it's coupled with possible grant funding, whether it be state or federal funding available, we estimate that that could lead to anywhere between three and six miles of additional trails and sidewalks. In the last three years, the city has implemented portions of that plan already. The new trail that you see along MacArthur Street between OBU and St. Gregory's is within that plan. Kickoo Street from the Spur to MacArthur is also identified as a high priority section. And also, we are getting ready soon to begin construction on a sidewalk along Union Street from the middle school north to the apartment complex. And so we've had some good success so far implementing that plan and this will take us much, much further down the road. Number two, the second item I wanted to discuss is the neighborhood revitalization funds that are allocated at one million dollars under the current plan. Hopefully, many of you are aware of our active program currently. In the year 2011, we've been able to demolish about thirty-two homes throughout town. These are homes that, that have been seriously damaged by fire or neglect and we've gotten a lot of positive feedbacks, feedback from neighbors and, and from whole neighborhoods that were bringing up in the process. And this one million dollars would be a significant shot on the arm that would allow us to do this on a grander scale through blighting studies and through large-scale strategies and redevelopment efforts that we haven't been able to tackle yet. And so that could include redevelopment of entire blocks, could include the city actually physically purchasing property and offering it for redevelopment along commercial areas. This has been done and, and is done in larger areas like Oklahoma City and Midwest City. And so this would allow us to significantly redevelop and continue our efforts that have been started this year in particular, but really for the last two or three years, thanks to the support that we've had from the city commission. That's what I've got. Thank you very much.
Okay. This is the point I'm going to hear from you. Don't worry that the topics are in any kind of order. If you want to talk about streets, you don't have to call somebody in the streets. Just get up here and tell us what you think about streets, public safety, neighborhood revitalization, sidewalks. I think that's it. Okay? Who wants to go first?
Come on up. Come on up. I'm wondering. It's okay.
I know we really, really, really need better streets.
Ma'am, would you sign in?
I'm wondering when we do the better streets, are the sidewalk, and I would think they're going to be sidewalks with these streets, right? Like coming down Kickoo, they're going to put sidewalks in too. And so I think that's a great thing. And I know I haven't had children in school in forty years, but I pay my property tax because I have to pay my property tax. It going up any considerable amount puts a hardship on probably everybody involved. But we do have to have these streets. I do understand that. The police, communication, boy, I do understand that. I am at a switchboard and I have a public address type thing and you go, so-and-so, please call Paige and you're going, this is horrible. My idea on this is though, can we prolong this until the police department can get their larger facility and put it all down here at one expense? Because it's going to cost, if we buy it now, it's going to cost. If we move it when the police department gets their facility, then it's going to cost again. So I'm just wondering if that wouldn't be a fairly efficient way to look at it. And if we had a thousand police, I'd be happy. I think the policemen here do a very good job and I know we need them. I don't know exactly where we got the numbers of going from a four thousand square foot, which I know that's really crowded, to eighteen thousand. Then to go from eighteen thousand to thirty-six thousand, that's doubling it. Is the population of Shawnee going to double? It hasn't doubled in, you know, a hundred years. We've been at thirty-five to forty-five thousand all of my life, I know. And so I'm wondering if the facility might not need to be quite thirty-seven thousand, you know? Eighteen thousand, I can kind of see that because we have grown a lot since this building was built. So I guess that's all I've got on my mind. I just don't want my taxes to be just ridiculously high. I work for a living, okay? So if we can keep it cost-efficient all the way, where everybody doesn't have to pay just exorbitant taxes, I think the whole world might be happy with it. Because I know we would be happy with streets and more policemen. Thank you.
Ma'am, would you sign in?
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Shawna Turner. I wanted to thank everyone for holding this listening session. It was very informative. I do have one question, Mr. Crowe Wiki. You put up several plans for streets and some of which you mentioned sidewalks by name, others of which sidewalks were not mentioned. I just wanted to offer, from my opinion, and I'm sure many others in the community, that sidewalks are very important, particularly on roads where they lead to, to or from schools. And I would like to know myself whether or not the projects that were listed that did not mention sidewalks indeed plan to include them as part of the construction. So information of that nature would be very helpful to me. Thank you.
I know she wouldn't sign in.
You should know that. I don't tell people to do that. Every now and then.
My name is Linda Agee and I think we're finally getting around to talking about the meat and potatoes of these projects tonight. These are the things that really need to be done and I think that they could possibly warrant an additional tax increase from the people to meet some of these needs for the future. We're talking about streets, sidewalks, neighborhood revitalization, public safety, and I think these are all very important, worthwhile projects. However, I think that all of these projects, if the city commission will take the time, forget about November, go back and take a look at all the projects and reprioritize them and take a look at the estimates assigned to each of these projects and make sure that they're being done as economically as possible, I think all of these could be met without a property tax increase. Shawnee citizens just can't afford fifty million dollars. And, you know, we're talking about well over twenty million dollars for parks, which means that some of these needs would have to be met with a property tax increase if that were to happen. According to the countywide, there's seventeen hundred dollars per person, man, woman and child, that it would cost to meet all of these projects. So I think these needs, these projects we're talking about tonight need to go to the forefront. Utility customers just saw a substantial increase in their water rates and there's a couple of more years of those to come. I don't know if you've been out to the Shawnee Twin Lakes, but the, we're in a drought and the water has receded a hundred feet from the high water mark. And if that drought is prolonged, we could find ourselves having to buy water from Atoka again, like we did a few years ago, to meet the needs of the citizens and the businesses in Shawnee. And now we'd be talking about another water surcharge on top of the water rate increases. And I, like some other people, that we're paying out so much for improvements that aren't necessities, and maintaining some of those things that we're talking about doing, and take the risk of running ourselves short in case we do come across another downturn in the economy where we can't meet those requirements.
Three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm Teresa Cody. I have had a retail business in downtown Shawnee for the past eighteen and a half years. As with many other downtown businesses, we have hung in through the good times and bad, believing the city had a five-year plan for improvements and revitalization of downtown. As of today, eighteen and a half years after I opened for business, none of these projects have been completed. As these current meeting, as these current meetings, a person representing economic development has stated, "We can't see the future by looking in the rearview mirror." Does that mean you are totally abandoning the past, incomplete projects? Does that mean we are to forget past mistakes and mismanaging of distribution of funds which were earmarked for certain projects the last time there was a tax increase? The big three sales tax project that was passed about ten years ago was to build a building at the Expo Center, build a ballpark, and a downtown revitalization park, plan. Now, just to give you a quick glance in that rearview mirror, the Expo Center was successfully completed. They're building, they're building, but not without overspending their budget, and went back to the city commission to ask for more money, which they quickly give them. The ballpark was also to be a part of the sales tax increase. After almost ten years, we still have no ballpark. However, we, the citizens, paid for expensive, empty piece of real estate north of town, which is currently not usable, nor is a convenient location to the youth of our city and the general populace. Now, for another look in the rearview mirror, the downtown project, which was originally to take in three blocks of Main Street and Bell Street, was never completed. No. No one in this room will ever live long enough to see that promise kept, but I'm going to try. I think we should make sure we look in that rearview mirror so we can be aware of what has and has not been accomplished in the past, and we should certainly be the watchdogs of any current, future projects and expenditures. I asked the citizens of Shawnee to look at each proposed project as if it were under a microscope, and see if it is a benefit of all, or if it is truly generated income for community, or will be a pork-belly project, to just benefit a select few. You should also get a pair of binoculars so you can see what you're, what you want your community to be. We need to figure out ways to help the Expo Center to become more sustainable, so it can continue to grow in the future, but not necessarily by increasing tax to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Holly Gordon, and I've lived in Shawnee for sixteen years. I am so proud to live here, you just have no idea. When I moved here, we had virtually nothing. Do you think that's a giggle? But coming from the East Coast where I moved here, and had a little bit of culture shock, had to kind of slow down, had to slow down my talking, people didn't understand what I was saying, still kind of happens. But I am so proud to live in Shawnee, Oklahoma. We've got good things here. I am so proud of our mayor and our city council for asking the citizens to come forward and give us our opinion. I mean, do you know how many places are open enough to hear the good and the bad and the ugly? Not very many. We're really fortunate. As for the police department, I'm excited. I'm excited for getting some, our infrastructure is what makes our town really special. And yes, we're not huge, and, you know, we're the sleepy town with the, with the small-town atmosphere, two universities, a tech school. We've got good things going on here. You might not realize it, but we do. I'm excited about the police department. And when I went through leadership Shawnee a few years ago, I was completely unaware of the police officers that are on duty and the fire off, the fire, help me out, the fire departments, the firefighters, thank you, that are on duty. We don't have very many. How many officers do we have on? Four and a super, maybe? At any given time, we've got thirty-five, forty thousand people? Four officers, one supervisor. How many firefighters do we have on duty at any given time? I don't know the number.
Ten with one supervisor.
Ten with one supervisor. Think about it. Think about it.
I mean, we want to talk about personnel and not our.
Well, yeah. I'm excited. I'm excited about, you know, Don was up here talking about that we're at the cusp of really doing good things. And for the, for us to come out and to be supportive and to share our views, the good and the bad and the ugly, like I've said, and let our folks know, this is how we feel, and this is what's important to us, you know? And I walked into this building with the young lady that spoke, the first person to speak this evening, and she said, "You know, if you're not willing to stand up here and talk about it, you don't have the right to say boo." That's not the word she said. It wasn't a naughty word, trust me. But it is true. We are, we are all here for a reason. Whatever our reason is, we're all here for a reason, because we are passionate about living here in Shawnee, Oklahoma. We are passionate about what is going on in our community, and that's what's bringing us all together. It doesn't matter which, if you're picking a side, we don't have to have sides, but bringing this together and bringing this out in an open forum is really spectacular, and I'm thrilled to see the amount of people that are here, and I hope that things like this continue, because we need this discussion and to hear about what's going on in the community. And if you're not willing to stand up and talk about it, you don't get to complain. Don't be grouse and writing into, you know, Scoopy at the newspaper, because you know that there's going to be people that are going to be grumbling. Sorry, it's the truth. And I'm done. So, thank you very much. Please continue these conversations. You're doing a great job for Shawnee.
My name is Becky Shackelford, and I wanted to finish looking in Teresa Cody's rearview mirror. We need to figure out ways to help the Expo Center to become more self-sustaining, so it can continue to grow in the future, but not necessarily by increases taxes to do so. The sports complex will cost a projected twenty million dollars to build, with no chance of it paying for itself. Ask yourselves if you should pay more sales tax for something you may never use. If you would like to utilize some of the money which was earmarked for the downtown retail district, we need to work out a project with OG&E to do something about the utility lines behind those businesses downtown. Fire trucks were unable to go down the alley to help put out the recent fire at Locos. We were lucky that only one building was lost. And sustained significant damage. Though the firemen fought valiantly, they were certainly hindered by the utility lines which hang too low and do not even provide proper voltage to those businesses. Remember, our downtown businesses generate tax dollars every day, and it is important to keep downtown a good environment. In conclusion, remember the saying, hindsight is 20/20. I suggest the citizens take a look in that rearview mirror so they don't get blindsided in this economy particularly. We need to get our priorities straight on which projects will see actual returns for our tax dollars. Ask yourselves, what do you want your community to be? Thank you.
My name's Tom Claybrook. I live at fifteen oh one North Union here in Shawnee. The projects that you had that we need for streets, what are those total? Thirty, forty million bucks? And how much is in this proposal for streets? Which one are you going to do? Are we going to tell the people which one we're going to do before we ask them to vote for the five million dollars? Are streets more important than a building for the police department? When I was on the city commission, there were around fifty to fifty-five employees of the police department, and that was in nineteen ninety-eight. And it was my understanding that it'd been about that amount for probably the last twenty, twenty-five years. During the period of time that I was on the city commission, there was never any discussion made, talked about, that we don't have enough room for the police department. At least, I never heard it. It was never brought to us by any of the city employees or the city manager. And as far as I know, they were doing a very good job during that period of time. Now, they say they need to quadruple the size, or five times the size, in order to be able to continue to do their job. I don't think we need to spend five million dollars on a new building for the police department when we have all these other needs, when we have rotten water lines all over this town that we're going to have to eventually address. And I don't know how we're going to do it other than through, we can't keep raising the water rates. It's just going to be so high that people just can't, can't deal with them, and the businesses can't deal with them. So, I think we're going to have to turn to one of these other avenues for the money for the water lines in the future. So, if we bind ourselves up, get our debt level so high, then when all the water lines start going bad on us again, we're not going to have the ability to raise the money to fix them. So, one of the items that I'm very much opposed to is the five million dollars for a new police department. I just don't, I think it would be nice. I'm sure the police officers would appreciate it, but I just don't think we can afford it with all the other things that we have. I was and have been a strong proponent of the sports complex for the youth of Shawnee. Our current facilities are subpar, to say, to be nice about it, and they have been. And I've been for building a new sports complex ever since I was on the city commission, but I cannot vote for a twenty million dollar price tag for it. It can be built for ten million dollars. There's no doubt in my mind. We don't need all the peripheral amenities that will rarely be used, in my estimation. We need the ballparks, quality ballparks for the citizens, for the children of this town to, to play on. And what I'm fearful, can I say one thing? What I'm fearful of is this whole thing is going to go down, because you've larded it up with too many things, and the price tag is too big, and you're not going to get any of it. Sorry.
My name is Fred Turner, and I just had a little comment along, a little bit along the lines of what Mr. Claybrook was talking about. I noticed that in certain bond elections and for different projects that, I think it was at the city of Atoka, they listed the ballot with certain items. And I suggested that to some of our commissioners, but I don't think they were that interested in it. But as an example, if you wanted to vote for five million for the streets, and the citizens say, "Yeah, we want to vote for that." If you want to vote for the sports complex, it's twenty million, we want to vote for that. If we want so much for water, it is amazing, there's nothing in there for water lines after this summer, but, and in that regard, I think that you might get some of these issues passed. And if you put it all together, I think there's a high likelihood that you won't get anything. And I have a little bit of a problem letting the city tax me for a period of ten years. I think the period of time should be shortened, and let's see how they perform on the projects that they want to do in four years, and then we'll let them have some more tax revenue. This whole city council that's here tonight may not be here in two years. So, that's all I have to say.
No one else can ask one question? I haven't seen what the ad valorem taxes will be increased by this twenty-eight or thirty million dollars, or if it's going to put on ad valorem tax. Has that been calculated? Has it been calculated, ma'am?
Yes, but since we haven't, haven't accepted all the projects, we don't know what's going to be in there.
Well, how much is it for the?
Fifteen mils is the max of, of four to five years' due, as is presented.
So, anything?
Average monthly Shawnee's about a hundred dollars annually.
What else? Two else?
My name is Fred Turner and I just had a little comment along, a little bit along the lines of what Mr. Claybrook was talking about. I noticed that in certain bond elections and for different projects that, I think it was at the city of Otoka, they listed the ballot with certain items. And I suggested that to some of our commissioners, but I don't think they were that interested in it. But as an example, if you wanted to vote for $5 million for the streets and the citizens say, "Yeah, we want to vote for that." If you want to vote for the sports complex is $20 million, we want to vote for that. If we want so much for water, it is amazing there's nothing in there for water lines after this summer, but, and in that regard, I think that you might get some of these issues passed. And if you put it all together, I think there's a high likelihood that you won't get anything. And I have a little bit of a problem letting the city tax me for a period of ten years. I think the period of time should be shortened. And let's see how they perform on the projects that they want to do in four years. And then we'll let them have some more tax revenue. This whole city council that's here tonight may not be here in two years. So that's all I have to say.
No one else can ask one question? I haven't seen what the adware on taxes will be increased by this 28 or 30 million or whatever it's going to put on headlamp. Has that been calculated? Has it been calculated, Mayor?
Yes, but since we haven't, haven't accepted all the projects, we don't know what's going to be in there.
Well, how much is it per day?
Fifteen mils is the max of the four projects in a year, Steve. As is presented. Average monthly Shawnee's about $100 annually. Oh, that wasn't hard. But as presented, that's pretty good.
Two else?
My name is Sam Vasquez. And I'm Hispanic or Mexican, whatever you want to call me. I've been called a lot of names. But I was born in the country, raised in Shawnee. I was running around here when there was a wagon yard on the corner of Oklahoma and Maine. I've been in law enforcement around this county for a number of years. Assistant chief at Chandler, captain on the police department with WOCA, chief at Chandler, I mean at Maude. And I've always called Shawnee my home. I've attended these meetings here a couple of times while I was human rights commissioner for the state of Oklahoma. I was your commissioner from 2003 to 2009. And the governor and I had a little parting of the ways, even though he wanted me to stay, or that's what the girls told me anyway. But I found out that in traveling the state, there's a lot of injustices and I couldn't stay on the commission, so I got out. And in a way, I have been doing some things around here trying to help out. I've always wanted to be helping my community. I have served wherever I've been. I served my country in the military for 40 years. I retired from federal service with 30 years. And seeing like I've been serving a lot and I don't mind it. Shawnee, I have been proud of. I want to call it my home. I would like to end up staying here till I'm gone. But there's a lot of things that I can't see here that the senior citizens are on fixed income, no coal erases. In three, three months, my water, my water has gone up. They've never checked my meter. I've got grass growing over my meter. They've never checked it. I check it every once in a while. I don't like it. But I've gone along with it. There's a lot of things that, that a lot of these people here and myself have to say. Three minutes, don't cover it. And I'd be glad to talk to anybody that wants to talk to me about it. And I'd be, I've done some things and I'd be glad to discuss anything that you want to discuss about Shawnee because I feel like I've been a resident here. I'm a born Okie. I've tried to assist and helped. I took my resume to the Chamber of Commerce when I retired from federal service. I brought one to the mayor back then when I retired. Nobody needed my services, so I just kind of fly on my own. I happen to be chairman of the Citizens Advisory Board for the Oklahoma City Police Department in Oklahoma City. I asked a question about three months ago, Deputy Chief Scully. I said, "How far does the city limits go east?" Because when I got off at Heron Walla Road, I seen a motorcycle cop giving a ticket to somebody and it just rung a bell with me. Do you know now, I don't know if you've noticed this or not, 50, about 50 yards past the county line, there's a sign that says Oklahoma City Limits. Folks, Oklahoma City has grown east, I mean west, north, south, they ain't got no place to go but east. And I've always considered Shawnee kind of a metropolitan of Oklahoma City. And we need to look at that point. Thank you.
I have something, one quick comment. I am so proud that the news stations aren't in here filming screaming and hollering and throwing picks and acting like idiots. Thank you everyone again for coming to this one sometime, sometime. We do appreciate it. We are hearing what you're saying and we've done a lot of dialogue and I'm sure we will get into that soon. We have to officially close this meeting and reconvene back at the city commission, so we'll do that now. Just adjourn, right? We was first. All right, Commissioner Smith made the motion. Anybody, Commissioner Harrod second. Yeah, pull up.
Smith. Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Wininger.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Okay, we will now reconvene our meeting. I just suggested snacks and I was afraid it was really long. I didn't bring them, but I suggested. And then I realized Hannah had her stuff. Hey, I'll reconvene the board of city commissioners meeting. That was item number 10. We'll move to item number 11. Discussion, consideration and possible action to instruct staff to prepare all documents necessary to call election for consideration of projects included, including determining of date, projects and funding sources. So I'll read that item so that we can even just start discussion about where we are, where we, where we think we need to be. While we're all mulling over some of the things that we have heard recently, I want to thank this commission for your hard work and also for remaining civil to each other. I think it was mentioned earlier, the fact that we can disagree and we have disagreed among this board on a lot of things pertaining to this. So I want to thank everybody for staying at the table and I think we're a good representation of what we're hearing. It's our job to decide where we go from here and what we want to, what we want to move forward. We've been working on this for a while and where do we go from here?
I would like to make a couple of comments. They were talking about street scape and I've been on Justin almost every month to find out where our application is and, and you know, where our funding or what the funding possibilities are and, you know, when it's going to become available. And I assume that they haven't made a decision yet then, Justin. So that was one of the priorities that I placed on the list is in case the, we didn't get some funding or matching funding from, from different sources that we would made application, that would do complete the street grape project. The other thing is I have also suggested that personally concerned about the water. I'm also concerned about the water. One of the reasons I ran for reelection is to get the water line from the lake to the water plant. And also concerned about the number of outages we've had and we just had one this last weekend. So I would encourage the commission to consider, based on probably our city manager and staff's recommendation, but additional monies be placed in some item somewhere that would include the, some work on the infrastructure of the water and sewer lines. And I don't know, I also agree that they can't keep continuing to raise water rates to do that, so we're going to have to find other sources to do that. So in future discussions about the bonds and, and what we want to do, I'd like to see that issue. And of course, I think everybody knows where I stand on a 20-year adware tax and, which I'm opposed to. I think we ought to be able to do it in shorter projects, fewer projects, and then if those projects are completed, then additional bonds voted. And once you start completing projects and start doing projects, then you can move to the next one. And I don't want to overburden the taxpayers with, with a 20-year issue and my children and grandchildren be paying for it. So if you get all your money tied up and have a need, then you can't come back and ask for it and can't, can't receive it if you put your maximum on your adware tax plus your one cent or half a cent sales tax.
I do believe that the inclusion or not of water and sewer improvements is a big decision that this group is going to have to make. I believe that when we launched into this, even two and a half years ago, we weren't going to talk about anything until we got the raw water line taken care of. And since then, the SMA has, has created at least a capital improvement plan for large projects like that and funding source, which is rate increase to, to do those projects. And we still have some, some space in there to do some additional projects. But I think we went into this thinking that water and sewer would pay for water and sewer infrastructure needs and sales tax and/or an adware tax would pay for the rest of general government and their needs in the capital improvements. And I think from what we've heard from the citizens, all three meetings, it's been very clear that water and sewer is still very, very important, very high on their priority list and that maybe we look at supplementing those improvements or accelerating some of the, the projects by another funding stream.
I think water is critically important in this community. I also know that we, you all gave us the opportunity to put in a, what we estimated to be a $12 million water line that was done for $7 million. So there's $5 million in bonding capacity within the current SMA enterprise fund, if you will. We also have asked for credentials at the last meeting to find a firm to give us a, to map out our community, determine water size, water line sizes and a number of other issues, properly design the system with all of the new additions, if you will, that have happened through the years. To put, to throw money, I mean, in a knee jerk reaction to put $5 million bucks in our water system today, perhaps replacing a six inch line with a six inch line, the study comes back and we needed a eight or 12 inch line maybe to service those particular areas, we're no better off than we are. While it's not pleasant to wait and you're not going to wait any longer, whether the water is included as part of this bond issue or whether it's, it comes from the enterprise fund or the municipal authority, we have to make the plan for those improvements to do it right. There's no point, point putting good money after bad. So I think in a very timely fashion, perhaps within a year or maybe 18 months, we'll have the initial part of this study done to recognize the improvements that need to be made in the system, specifically doing, you know, to create good circulation, to increase water pressure around the community. But that $5 million that's been proposed or talked about for water investment through a bond issue at this time is not needed. It's clearly available through SMA, which is funded by the users. So the dollars are there in savings from a previous project. We're 18 months maybe or more away from having a plan in place to make a prudent investment in our utility system. That's at least my opinion.
Well, we continue to use that money that's available to make improvements on our sewer plant, water plant, also metering system at both at West Watkins and at the Twin Lakes. So we don't really have that much money immediately available because we've been using some of it for projects that are ongoing, so.
But I think those were, I'm not going to argue at that point, but I think those were budgeted items and I'm talking about strictly the bond capability we have through SMA to generate $5 million tomorrow if we wanted to invest that money tomorrow through SMA.
I think it's important for us to remember that a couple of years ago, civic groups came to us and said, "You need to have a vision. You as a commission need to tell us what you want from our city, what you want our city to do in the next five years, 10 years, 20 years. What is your vision and we'll help you get there." Well, we went to the retreat and we did that. And we've had a lot of pieces of paper and I don't know if any of you all have seen them and they're probably floating around city hall somewhere, just butcher block paper where we just wrote ideas about what we wanted. If you could make Shawnee exactly what you wanted, where do you get? You know, where are we going to get to? I think what's important here for all of us to remember is that we have the grandiose ideas. We have already honed it down. We asked for public feedback and now we have to sit back and I think we need to be very careful and we need to look at all of the projects very carefully. Determine if there's a better way to do it, a less expensive way to accomplish the goal, which is to take care of our wants and our needs because that's what makes our community great. We have to take care of infrastructure. We have to take care of knowing that when you get up in the morning and you turn the water on, you're going to have water. When you need to make a 911 call, that there's going to be a police officer that shows up. But I think it's also important to know that, and of course, my children are aging out slowly, but I have a grandbaby, that they're going to have a baseball park or a soccer field or a playground or a sidewalk. They're going to have that quality of life later. I think it's great that we've asked for public feedback. I think now we need to take what we've learned in the last two weeks because I think we were able to hone down the projects and really get input from people. Now let's take that, let's explore it a little bit further. I know that, you know, we've talked about trying to have another meeting this week. That probably won't happen and let's be realistic about it. We've got some issues and we need to make sure we do this correct and we do it legally. But what I would like to see us now is let's answer some of the questions. The regional park, do we need a $20 million regional park? I don't know. That's a really big number to me. That's a really big number to a lot of people. What's the business plan? Who's truly going to run it? Let's see the economic impact study on it. Let's make sure, because if a $20 million park is not going to bring something back to us in the long run, we don't need a $20 million park. If a $10 million park will actually reap some rewards for us, then maybe we need to look at that. I don't know. And I don't know the answers and I'm not saying that's the answer. I'm just saying we need to flesh all of these projects out just a little bit further. We need to know who's going to run this park, really. I mean, is this going to be a park that if my family decides on a Sunday afternoon that we're going to play, you know, the girls against the guys and we're going to play baseball, can my family go out there? I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't know the answer to that and I've asked that question and I've gotten different answers. Is this truly just a competitive park? And if kids want to play a pickup game on Sunday afternoon, where do they go? Do they get to go there or do they go to Lions Club? I don't know. I think there's some unknowns that people have shared with me that they're just kind of scared about. And I think it's that unknown that makes everybody very leery and I think we need to delicately weigh the wants, the needs, really what's going to benefit our community, really where do we need to be five years from now, 10 years from now? We need to be concerned about who truly pays for all of these. I think there's some unknowns that people have shared with me that they're just kinda scared about. And I think it's that unknown that makes everybody very leery, and I think we need to delicately weigh the wants, the needs, really what's gonna benefit our community, really where do we need to be five years from now, 10 years from now? We need to be concerned about who truly pays for all of these. Do we want just the property owners to pay for certain projects that are gonna be used by people that are from outside of town? Well, maybe that project, if there's a way for sales tax dollars to be used, then everybody shares in paying for it. So, I just, that's, fellow commissioners, I'm just, some of this stuff really scares me. It's an awful lot of money. And I think what we have to remember, we have to make an informed decision about what to take to a vote of the people, and then ultimately, the democracy works, because it goes out for a vote, and you all decide what you want and what you don't want. And in the end, by voicing your opinions, you've helped us hone down the projects, hone down the dollars, talk about what's important, but then ultimately, the decision's gonna be made at the polls. And so, people are gonna have to get out and vote, and essentially, you know, one of those things, if you don't talk, we don't know, and if you don't vote one way or the other, you don't get the right to come back later and say, "Why didn't you do this?" Or, "Why didn't we talk about it?" So, I wanna see us talk about it some more. I wanna see us produce some answers that people want, so we can make an informed decisions, so the people of Shawnee can make an informed decision. So, that's where Pam Stevens stands this evening.
How about you guys?
I want to thank everybody for coming out and sharing their views with us, because I think it's very important. I think we're all here together to try to move the city forward and have projects that are very important. The streets, you know, those are, we're getting too many cars on these streets. You know, the police department, I think, is filled up with a lot of police officers, and I just really want to thank everybody for coming out. We are listening. Streetscape is, you know, I'd like to move forward with that project. Sidewalks, I like sidewalks, I'd like to see more sidewalks. But I want everybody to know that we're listening, and thank everybody for their time for coming out here and sharing their points with us. Thank you.
It must be last.
Well, you think we're through?
I didn't know if Billy wanted to go first or me.
I think, I'm just like John, I think everybody's learned a lot from the citizen input. And as I said in the previous commission meeting, there hasn't been a decision really made. We're still grinding the sausages, they say sometimes. It's important that you get up and say, and participate in city government. And I'll tell one on Mr. Crowe with you over here, when we did four-lane MacArthur Street. At the original time that we had a city meeting, sidewalks weren't even mentioned. And we were told at that meeting we weren't supposed to have them. Well, a commissioner came down here and found out that we could have them, and you see two sidewalks. And that's all it took was that question. So, that's how powerful this can be. What you come down here to say to us is very powerful. If you don't have water, folks, you don't need a police department. If you don't have fire, or if you don't have water, you don't need fire, firemen. You don't need safety. You don't need roads, you don't need streets, you don't need ballpark, you don't need, because you don't have nothing without water. And one of the reasons I wondered around is to make sure, and we're going in that area, is to ask for a 50-year study as to how much water we're gonna need. And people said, "Well, you know, why come you raise my water bill? It's free, it falls from God into a lake out here. How come I gotta pay for that?" You don't pay for the water, you pay for the distribution of it. And it does have to be fixed, has to be maintained, and we have a lot of catching up to do. And I want everybody in this room and everybody in this town to realize that I'm committed to the water extremely. Next to that is public safety. And not only do we want a police officer to show up like Pam said, or a fireman to come out and put out our fires, we want those people to be safe too. And one of the first meetings we had is, and I wasn't even on the commission, I went to a meeting down here, and we had it at the library. And I sat there, and I thought, we were talking about all these different projects, and I'm telling you, as a citizen, and I was one, I still am, you sit out there and you think, "Oh, it's really easy to do." Well, you get behind this thing here, and you're actually involving people's lives, it's a whole lot different. But I left that meeting thinking, "Oh, sure, we need to widen some streets, and we need not to put it on anybody's parade here. We need to do this, and the citizens would love it if we had this, and we could move out here." And I got to thinking, but if they're not safe, if somebody on the council, and these people are very, very good at this, if we don't protect our citizens, then we're not doing the job. That's our job one, is citizens to be protected. And then you go in from there on. But once you get to the end of the plate, there's not a restaurant in this town that doesn't serve pie or ice cream. Now, we had our meat and potatoes, and I've said what you've heard me say, and I'm very much committed to that. Well, we haven't built a park in this town in 60 years. I'm 58 years old, I'll be 59 in November. And it's kinda sad, because we've had the same ballparks out here, the little two-bit ballparks, they might have sprayed paint in the fence line, but we haven't done anything on them. Now, when people come to Shawnee, and I see a lot of them in my business, when they come into Shawnee, they want things. And to be honest with you, in 1952, we probably had about an 18,000 population in this town, and we got about 30,000, that's all we've got. I don't ever remember getting up to 40. The reason that Edmund goes up to 100-plus, and Norman goes up to 100-plus, and all of these towns, Midwest City, we've all seen the revitalization up there that they've put on. They put their money where the mouth is. And I would really like to see us stretch a little bit as a town, taking care of our meat and potatoes. But that ballpark out there will rival, write this and tell me I'm crazy later, that will rival some of the income that we get out from the Expo Center. And the reason is, if you know anybody that's in sports, and anybody that attends these rallies that they have, they, these people come into town, they're here for two or three days, they rent motel rooms, they buy food, they buy gasoline, they buy whatever they have to buy at Walmart on a daily basis, or wherever, and they spend their money in that town. That park, somebody said earlier that it has no choice, no hope of generating income. Well, let's wait till the economic impact study is concerned. I completely agree with that statement. But let's not prejudge it either and run it down, because one of these days, that park will be paid for, whether it's 10 million, 15 million, or whatever we finally come up with. But that park is not just gonna be some swing sets like we have all over town. It's not gonna be just a jungle gym thing. It's a completely different animal. It will generate money. Now, how much? We've gotta investigate that. But let's not forget, we're doing all this with the meat and potatoes, that other towns grow with dessert, and they put some stuff that people want. Because if we don't have dessert, I guarantee you, you might as well shut your window. Name me one restaurant in this town, saw it, it has dessert. Everybody has dessert. You quit serving dessert, people go across the street like to Midwest City to get their dessert. We've had people say that, "Drive to Midwest City, because I can go up there and I can eat and have all these kind of things." We gotta have, we gotta have a balanced meal, is what I'm saying. It can't just be meat and potatoes. This has been a meat and potatoes town all my life. Let's get some things that you all, as a citizen, have responded to in surveys, and they're called quality of life issues. So, let's not just, let's not put all of our marbles in one thing. We do have to do some things that, if you don't have water, and your business is down, and you're closed down because the water lines are broken, or whatever the reason is, we can bring them in in a ballpark, but they're not gonna stay here, because the business can't have no water. We've got to take care of both. But one's not necessarily more important than the other.
Steve, would you share your miracle field story? Please.
Well, I don't know how, I don't want to offend anybody, but I'm a Christian, and I'm not ashamed of it. So, I can tell you, this is what happened, and I'm sitting beside Linda Peterson, wasn't on the, yeah, I was on the commission at that point. I may get emotional about this, so you'll excuse me, I'll apologize. Well, not really. We're sitting in this meeting, and you all saw people from Jacobs come in and talk about our ballpark. And he opened up the meeting, was saying, "The commissioners that were here before had excellent questions, and we really wrote a lot of things down, and they gave us a lot of good ideas." And I thought, oh, boy, the pressure's on me, I have no idea what to ask him or anything like that. So, he starts describing the park to us, and it was, I'll be honest with you, when I first heard sports park, I'm going, I don't think I want to spend that kind of money on a sports park. It's a whole lot more than that, and you all saw some of that out there. But in one of my commission, or one of the questions that I wanted to ask, this is a very worldwide company, that they plan stuff all over the world, literally, that were, was telling, going over our park ideas with us. And I started to ask the question, "Is this ADA approved?" That's what my original question was, which is American Disabilities Act. I know I was gonna screw it up, so I really think, because I don't take credit for this, I honestly don't, I started to ask that question. Right in the middle of that question, it just kinda got jumbled. And out came, "Have we done everything we can do for our citizens that are disabled or have problems, and we call them special needs?" And I'm sitting there going, "Where did that come from?" It had to come in from God, because I did not intend to ask that question. I have done some work in my business for special needs children, but I didn't intend to ask that question. And Doug said, "Well, as a matter of fact, no, we haven't, but we can, and it's called a miracle field." And you take one of the ballparks, and it's on our program, and you seam in it. You take a baseball field, and you completely seam in it, and you put astroturf down. And what this allows is people that have wheelchairs or just different disabilities to actually participate as a citizen of this town. And they're out there, folks. Lady out here comes down from Oklahoma City to work with our school kids, had a wreck out in front of Paul Milburn's place, and I have a rental car agency, and I went out and picked her up so she could have a car. On the way back, she tells me that she comes down and she works with special needs children. And I said, "Well, let me show you this park." She goes, "Oh, that'd be an awesome idea." Three weeks later, she brings the car back after her car got repaired, and she said, "What can I do to help you get that passed?" And I said, "Well, you live in Oklahoma City, so it's a little bit of a challenge." But I said, "You can talk about it." She said, "I just attended a ball game where it had recently rained, and people struggled to get their kids to move a wheelchair over to this direction in a field and over here because it was so muddy." And they struggled and struggled, and she said, "Whatever I've gotta do, you all don't have any idea how many special needs kids you have in this community, and I do." So, I'm just saying, I'd love to take credit for that special needs idea. I can't, whether you want to believe that or not, I'm sorry, that's the way it happened. It didn't happen, it came through my lips, but it didn't come from me. But I really would like to see that come apart to where there are citizens that, once in a while, you see them, but they don't, they don't really have a place to go. And that's kinda sad, that we've really not done anything. Now, Edmund has one, and I believe James or somebody else has a miracle field, that's the way they call it. So, there's a lot to this field that people need to know about. But keep in mind, and these, all of our commissioners are working, we're still working, we're still chunking it out. It's tough. It's like trying to get a pair of shoes that'll fit one person so we can go forward as a city, but we have 30,000 left and 30,000 right feet to try to fit it to all of the needs, and it's tough to do. And you don't want to overlook anything, and we want to get something passed, we want to move this city on, and this commission can do it. But we can offer you whatever we offer you, and if you don't get out and vote one way or the other, this town will do what it's done for a lot of times, and kind of sit there. So, I hope we can get something right. I want it to be right so it can pass. And these people up here, it's amazing how much work is involved in this job. It really is amazing. Honored to do it, I'm not complaining, but there's a lot to it, and we're trying to do an awful lot, I realize that too.
Yeah, $50 million seems like a lot of money, but when we come here, about two years ago, and had a list of needs for the next 20 years, it's $200 million. It's hard to cut what everybody needs down that line. So, we've beat this up a lot. We've done a lot of things, like the parks. I know that me and Frank and James Price all went down to check the shake, because we'd heard about that park a lot, so we wanted to go down and see it. So, we spent a day down there with their director, went through the whole park, through every concession stand, every little item in that whole park. Yeah, it's, I think it's $7 million, I think that's about right, 52 acres. So, realistically, yeah, for 52 acres, you got $7 million. We're talking about developing a 160-acre park. So, you take that and just multiply it, you know, a lot of times, you don't work on profits or points, biggest dollar amounts, and by the time you sit there and figure out the triple the size of a park, yeah, it's gonna go up in the money regardless. We're also looking at doing a lot more of this as sports parks. Down there, they have, it's basically made for baseball. Even their soccer fields and their multipurpose fields, they, can show on the little map. When you really get there, there's not a lot to them. I think only one of the fields even had any type of lighting on anything, others in baseball, and the rest were just basically areas that they could mark out. They're basically just open grass areas, no bleachers, no mentees on anything for anything besides baseball. I've also went to several other parks, went to Broken Arrow, been to, I know many, both have seen one in Branson at different times we've looked at. We've actually went out there, looked at all these facilities to see what was getting... My whole idea is, is we went through quite the process to develop what this community says they needed and wanted for this park. If we, I want to make sure that we can give you what you say you want, and if we do less, I'm gonna make sure we, there's no way we can do the park as presented for half a month. Something's gonna have to come off of there. I'm just gonna make sure everybody understands that if we cut the amount down, we're losing something out of that park. We may have, there's always a little contingency money in there, and, but when we go to the people, I want to make sure that we can do the park as presented, and not come back later and say, "Well, we ran out of money." I want to make sure that, you know, the best we, with the best information we have, that we can do what we're saying we want to do. Another thing of the aquatic center, looking at a lot of these numbers and all, and I even looked back at some of these and went back over, luckily, we've done a lot of studies through the years, and we're going back and using a lot of those. Today, I pulled out the one on the pool again, and looked at the different options we got there. We could really make that super usable, and we need to still have something on this end of town. I mean, that is real critical, that we, you know, have services all over the community. And that was part of the ideal, is if, we would love it if the regional park, if we can get built for a lot less money. You know, if we could save $5 million on that park, that's great. Look at the advantages we could do with other parks in this town. I know there's some playground equipment that's, you know, quarter million dollars to replace it, that some of them are almost ready to be condemned at this point. You take the large, James, how much is that slide, that slide park over by the expo? If we were to place it nowadays?
Orlando's been about $120,000.
That's just a one-apparage, a large one? So, it's real easy to spend, to spend money. It's, and a lot of our parks are disimporcet. And I think what's also important is we build this to the level where we can get the draw of people and use of people, where we'll be able to have our own parks and rent department. I think that is key. We need to get back in that business in this community. I think, personally, I think if we, part of this regional parks thing is, we're gonna have to set up some type of board, like we do at the expo, where we have input from several different agencies, to really make sure that that thing is properly run and maintained, and oversight, you know, for me, like we do on the expo and other entities. Streets, yeah, we could use four or five times what we got in there for streets. There's no doubt about that. There's no doubt about that. Public safety, it'd be great to add another 100 officers, but, you know, we just don't have the tax dollars to do that. Hopefully, we can give them some more space. One thing that I know several others are talking about is some real high priority things. I think this commission as a whole, if it's a safety issue for any of the employees or emergency personnel, that is our top priority. I think this radio equipment, towers, anything that helps them make sure that they're safer, that comes well above the park, even as much as I'd love to see a park, if it meant one or the other, I would have to go with the public safety side. Expo Center, we could use a lot of upgrades, and there's a lot of general maintenance that this has to be done. One way or the other, we're gonna have to spend some money at the expo, no doubt about that. You know, we got parking lots and things like that, we're gonna have to spend some money on. It'd be great to go ahead and take another step forward, do some major improvements out there. And that realm, I believe, is getting very competitive, and if we continue to slide backwards, we're going to lose a lot of the investment we've already put in. That's about where I go.
I think one of the things that has come out loud and clear also is that maybe we haven't done as good of a job letting the citizens do what we are doing. What some of the projects that, that may be in the hopper or may be funded already, you know, where we are, where we are on phase two of the downtown streetscape, where we are on SMA projects. You just mentioned another, part of, part of even the presentations tonight remind us that some of these projects came out of comprehensive plans, you know, studies that were done that we get accused of putting on the shelf and not, not paying any attention to once they're done. They have been viewed, here anyway, as being vitally important to being able to make the right decisions, the next step, you know, making sure that we go in the right sequence for some of these improvements, so that we don't, so that we don't miss anything. And I hope that message gets across too. I'm kinda like Pam, I think we need to continue the dialogue and find out, again, where do we, where are we gonna settle on, on the level of funding for these projects, the timing of these projects? And of course, the funding stream. We've had a lot of information from our city attorney about what, what we can and can't do, and what the ramifications are for keeping some of the projects in the current funding stream. So I think we have to discuss moving, moving those around, and what makes sense legally and preferential. So, but I do, but I do think we still have some, some homework to do to let everyone know at least what, what studies we have, how we're funding them, what projects are going on, and what that status is. And then here, because always the studies that we have, I mean, just like the comprehensive plan, it may need to be updated. There may be some things that aren't appropriate anymore. Maybe our community has grown in a different way, or a road got improved because we got matching dollars for something, and so that gets off the list. There are things that we always need to evaluate, and, and all of our jobs are to keep each other in check, to make sure that, that the priorities are still there, and they're still, that's what's needed.
Linda, I'd like to make one more comment. Our, our city staff has really worked hard, and I really think that they would really blossom under some of these projects and be able to handle these projects, and we look forward to these projects. And so I think we have the manpower here to, to work on these projects. And that's exciting. That's, that's key to making this happen, is employees that are able to handle. And I know they've been working hard, trying to get these meetings together and all this, and I think they're doing a great job.
I'd like to touch again on the, a couple of things, but the ballpark in particular. And it, I mean, just from a public perspective, it may be that, we, I feel like we've certainly given the opportunity to the community to be involved in the public hearing process, the design phases, giving us feedback. We certainly spoke to all of the user groups, the baseball association, the soccer association, and others. And I have to agree with someone who made a comment probably at the airport, that we went from a baseball park for our kids to a regional park, that was an economic engine. That was all from the feedback of those people who sat through those meetings, and a number of them, and provided that feedback. That's the information that was then given to the engineering firm. And the product they delivered to us, which may be pie in the sky, but the project they delivered to us was a $20 million project. I have no question in my mind that this community may choose to spend $5 million, put some ballparks out on the land that we bought. We can do that. We can be like Bixby, we can be like Salasaw, we can be like Chickasha, we can be like Barstool. We can be like every other community in the state. And it's my hope that we can better communicate the opportunity that's in front of us to make an investment in this community, where, as I think Daniel Shaughnessy said, the city of champions makes Shawnee the place people want to be. Not only does that drive traffic for soccer and baseball, it makes people want to be in this community to live here. It brings people into our community, into our restaurants, our hotels, our stores. It's an investment in ourselves. Why can't we do some things that are at the pinnacle, instead of like these other communities? We are at the crossroads of America, and I think that investment will reap rewards for years and years to come. I think the same is true with the expo. It's designed after the facility in McAllister. McAllister's got it in Paul's Valley. The list goes on and on of communities that have a very similar facility to what we have. Unfortunately, as they're coming here, they're seeing some of the wear and tear, the deferred maintenance that's happened through the years. It's time to invest in that facility. That can be a draw for, a real draw, economic draw for this community as well. I think we've gotta set the prize at the top of the pile. We can give ourselves what everybody else has, or we can set a, make a statement, I guess, to the rest of the world, for them to achieve greatness that we've already achieved. So it's an investment in not only a few dollars, I think from an ad louran perspective, from what we've talked about, if that's the direction it goes, it's 30 cents a day for the average homeowner in our community. 30 cents a day for 10 years or 20 years, whatever the number is. I mean, it's a nominal investment to make Shawnee the place to be. That used to be our logo, or slogan, rather. I believe we need to keep that in mind as we continue to talk through these options. I am a big advocate. We've seen, we've been presented the plans for that particular facility, 20 million bucks. We've been, a lot of speculation out there, we could build the same thing for 10 or 12 or 15. I think you've gotta trust the people sitting around this, this horn up here and future commissions. We had a $12 million waterline project that came in for $7 million. We're good stewards of your money. I think that there is a chance that we can build that ballpark for less money than the $20 million. But at the same point in time, I don't wanna build a facility to the money available and miss something. Do it halfway, or we've, we've wasted a lot of money. So we need to make the decision, as this communication continues and the discussion continues, do we wanna have the miracle field for these kids? It's a totally separate quad. If we scale back, it's probably a phase two. It's nothing unique for our community. If we do the deal and invest in ourselves and in our future, we've got some really unique things for people around this state, around this region, to talk about. So I hope as that discussion continues, we remember from whence we came. And I have a comment on Steve's thing. I played on Lions Club Park, and I have to agree with him, 40 years ago. And it is the same, other than, you know, Russ and others have done a great job out there in cleaning it up, it's the same facility we've had in this community, the only facility, for many, many years. It's time for us to get off our duffs and invest in this community and do something that is progressive, that's gonna make people want to move into our community and be a part of this community. And I think frankly, as our subcommittee studied these issues, 200 million down to 100 million, down to $50 million worth of projects, we've added out a lot of the various things that have been discussed at these last few meetings. But, and we prioritized what we felt like, as we argued amongst ourselves, and we literally had some pretty good, to get where we got. And we felt like these were solid priorities for our community that would take us into the future.
Well, I'm assuming from all the discussion, then, that we're probably not gonna need to meet tomorrow?
Just wanted to let you know that was out there just in case. Didn't wanna presuppose anything.
Whatever we need to do to, to move on in the discussion, to generate a possible action to instruct staff, I say we table it until, I think it's February the 6th, and continue to work on the, what, February the 7th? Might be called election February the 7th, 2012, and to work on the projects and try to get to a point where we can sell the projects.
That will mean you'll, you'll need to call an election in, in early December, so we're only talking, you know, 60, 90 days here for you to, to work it out and have, and have staff do whatever needs staff. You know, I, I will tell you on behalf of bond council that a minimum of two weeks is what they would like to have in refining it, and we were taking it down to about, not even 14 hours, so, more like 12 hours. So if, we probably wanna be somewhere, you know, ready to, to go around Thanksgiving, or the middle of November.
As far as I'm concerned, the bond council right now is gonna kinda write the, write the, what we can do, 'cause my understanding is, there's a lot of things we thought we could do that we can't do. So we need to continue to work on that, and on item number 12, I think maybe we go ahead and hire them to get it done.
Why don't we let them, we put that on for tonight in case we need to meet tomorrow? But I really don't want to get into an engagement letter with them till we have a little better idea of where we're going, because that impacts the fee. So they'll, they'll do some preliminary work with us for no fee for, I mean, they only get paid if you do the deal anyway. But it's hard for them to figure out how to structure their deal. So I think we can defer that for a little while, too.
Okay. Now, on item number 11, I'd make the motion that we defer this into a possible election of February the 7th. And we need more support from the public and everything else now, before we move on for our decision to make.
Okay, a couple of things. I'm disappointed we can't be, obviously, on a November ballot, but just the public information, there's a blackout in December and January, so the next available date beyond November is a February election. I think we need to make a definitive, or take definitive action tonight about further meetings to continue that, this conversation, and not drop the ball here to staff.
I guess, commissioners, you know, one of the things that we don't take advantage of very often are work sessions. And I think that would be the perfect way to accomplish it, where we, you know, talk about the nuts and bolts of putting this together. Certainly, I think from our discussions, we have some differences of opinions and amounts potentially, and projects and timelines, so that would be the best way to accomplish it. And we're willing to do whatever the commissioners want to do it in terms of work sessions, so we can talk about the nuts and bolts, get the bond council here, get the financial council here, whatever commissioners desire.
Well, if you're talking about work sessions, including the public, then, but if you're just talking about commission, then, well, there aren't the meetings.
Work sessions would be, would be meetings that you, you know, I guess because of the Oklahoma law, we, we're required to open up and close meetings, but in between, we don't necessarily have to write the agenda item for a decision. You guys can have discussions about it amongst each other, and then we can begin to gather that information and, you know, get it into something that everybody's agreeable to.
I think we've got a long way to go to get public support for a bunch of these projects, and we need to be conscious of keeping the public informed and moving along, 'cause as, you know, like I say, it's not gonna do us, we can sit up here and make all the decision in the world, but if we don't have the voters with us, then we're wasting our time and energy, and the staff's time and energy.
Mayor, as a matter of process, probably the, the way to handle this would be to go ahead, if there's a second to Commissioner Harrod's motion, to go ahead and vote on that, and then, and then you could, after that motion, go ahead and move to setting up vote call dates or, or something else.
One thing at a time.
One thing at a time.
Yeah, okay. I'll second you. Is, is the motion to further discussion?
It's just to defer.
Defer.
Defer, defer the decision.
Further discussion of the projects. We have to, what, October the 15th or 19th, or whatever the date commission meeting is, then to get all the projects lined up.
Well, you can go into November, because you don't have to, I mean, you don't have, you won't have to approve the ballot title, call the election, so forth and so on, till, I don't know the exact day in December, but approximately December 7th.
Well, I want it to where we're not set in stone on what we're talking about tonight.
Sure.
I want it to be where we can change and modify, and whatever we need to do to make this an acceptable proposition to the public.
Well, the, the motion that you have is to have an election in February with discussion between now and then. That's the motion that you made, or that I heard.
That's what I was gonna clarify.
Okay. Is that in keeping with the agenda item?
Yes.
Sure.
That is the agenda item.
I can't even consider an election.
Well, you're not actually calling the election.
Just to make sure to consider.
Yeah, you're not actually calling the election, but that you're saying, you're gonna move consideration to February.
Right.
To instruct staff to prepare documents to call an election.
You don't, you can do, we can do a whole series of motions under this item.
Okay.
In pieces, I mean, that's the, you don't have to have an agenda item, whole motion, you just have to have the whole subject matter on there, and then you make however many motions you need to make to get where you wanna go.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion on the floor and a second right now to continue discussion of these projects with consideration of an election in February.
Correct.
Understanding that's not the formal call. It's, right.
That's, understanding that that's not the formal call. Got it. Okay, is that the motion in the second? Anybody else wanna, want any other clarification of that? Okay. Call, roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Do we want to instruct staff to arrange for a date that we could get together? Because it seems like a work session is not going to fit into a normally scheduled commission meeting agenda on every other Monday night. Just to look at calendars and try to do something soon? Is that your intent?
Well, yeah, but, I mean, a work session.
Not next week, maybe. We have to, we have to give enough time.
I mean, a work session needs to be, where we, I mean, in the interim, we need to be talking to.
That's right.
Individuals to find out what, you know, what they're gonna support.
And I don't know that one session is gonna do it.
Right.
Also, so.
But I mean it.
Well, I think the public certainly is a part of these work sessions, if they choose to participate and hear the discussion, but I think it is a commission-based discussion of the.
But what purpose, I mean, what good's it gonna do if they're just gonna listen to us? I mean, we need to listen to them. They're the ones gonna have to vote on it, they're the ones gonna have to pass the favor. So we need to listen to them. That's my, my point all the time. I mean, that's why we have. I mean, that's why we had the hearings, I mean, that's why I suggested the survey or something so we can find out what people's going to support. We don't know what people are going to support.
And that's why we have elections and I think we use our.
Before, I don't want to have an election knowing I'm going to get, you know, down the tube.
It's, nice question. Is staff comfortable with the questions that have been asked along the way that they know to go back and try to answer some of the questions? Does that make sense? I mean, questions have been asked by citizens in the last three meetings. There are some very obvious questions out there. Does staff need time to answer those questions and bring them back to us to say, okay, and if someone has to sit down and watch it on TV again and write down the questions, I'll have someone at my office do it if we have to, because questions need to be answered. So how much time is it going to take to do that? And maybe staff needs to bring something back to us very quickly to say, okay, we think this was the question, we think this is the answer, now let's develop it some more. Because until we have those answers, we're all going to be asking the same questions.
Several of us have taken notes down. We'd like the opportunity to answer some of those questions from our perspective, as well as if we don't have the information, get the answer to the question and interact with commissioners that way, absolutely. Some of them are disciplined with each one of their particular professional areas, so certainly that would be advisable.
We've been filming all these, haven't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think too, you know, maybe, it seems to work very well with commissioners when we have a meeting attached to this one. I realize it's almost 10 o'clock tonight, but if we started at 4:00, 4:30, something like that by commission day, we could kind of start scheduling them and maybe get some of this work done, you know, partner up with a commission meeting night. But that's certainly up to commissioners to decide. We can certainly get Cindy, my secretary, to help out in scheduling these.
Okay. I think that's important.
Okay.
And that's why I was thinking it may take more than one, just for information dissemination is part of what happens. Then we have to think about it, we have to hear responses, we have to, you know, start being creative in a different way maybe, and just that dialogue can create other things.
I'd like to suggest that as you do these workshops, that we have both our bond counsel and our financial advisor present, because sometimes questions can come up that they can answer on the spot, plus the more, particularly bond counsel, the more that he hears you talk, the easier it is to craft the ballot language. Because you get, you start to hear consensus and then can say it back to you. So you're going to need, I think, to have those two people or someone from their offices there, probably all the work sessions, you come back and then come back to a regular agenda with the product that we will have circulated and crafted kind of as we go.
Okay. And you know what? What I'd like to see is when we're talking about the expo center, why not invite the expo board and have a combined meeting again to truly talk about what they see their needs are versus wants and so that we can open up some dialogue with them when we talk economic development, maybe have SEDF come so that we can all talk openly.
And so they can answer things. That was the one I forgot, like the expo board, the expansion of that building, the extra money that was needed was paid for by the expo themselves, but they need to answer that. They know how much it was, how long it lasted, and I think that's going to be paid off as well too.
I mean, we need to pull some of these governing bodies, when I say that, I mean, like the boards in and let's have that dialogue with them. But if we look at them and say, okay, truly, this is what we're being told by the public, what can we tram?
Right on.
Right.
So we at our next meeting have the documents necessary to resolve the expo issues that have stalled this?
Well, we have some, I'm almost in that proven and negative. We have part of the issue resolved now that we found a deed as opposed to just a lease. I have not had a chance to talk to counsel for the expo board yet, but, you know, we'll try to be farther. I think though, part of what this gets into is we may be asking a question no one's ever formally had answered before, so we're just going to work with it. Here we are. Yeah, you know, it was mid-morning before we found pieces and then since then, we've been looking just generally to see, I mean, we're going to have to just read some records and make sure there's not something out there we've missed. And I need to talk to their lawyer and I just didn't get a chance to do that today.
So what's the timeframe on that though? I mean, that kind of hinges off some of our.
Well, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to, there's the rest of this week and next week's Oklahoma municipal meeting, so I don't want to commit that that answer can be finalized by two weeks from today, but I think it can be finalized pretty quickly.
So our first meeting in October?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, I still don't know what I don't know.
Right.
Because the answer, what I thought was the answer, we started work this morning, turned out to not be the, I mean, what we all thought was the answer this morning turned out to not be the answer. So I just got to read some paperwork and talk to some expo board people and get the facts together before I can give you an answer.
Well, I would hope that we could have those corrective measures in place, that we could take action either under.
I understand that it has an impact on how you structure the deal.
Can I ask, what's the latest on the impact study on the, on the richard park? When are we supposed to have that?
Dustin, have you talked to Dave?
It's still going through the university approval process and so we're hoping for early October, early November completion.
Okay. Still time for you. Any more discussion or motions for item 11? Move 12?
Well, have we really set a, staff is going to find work session dates?
On a four-hour, four-and-a-half-hour meeting like tonight, I'm not in. I'm out for that. I just can't do that.
Well, maybe they should be standalone. I mean, just, you guys can work it out after you talk to all the commissioners, but I think it's important that we stay in ear on this.
And the reason that we did this meeting this way was to try to have all the, to be able to break down the topics so that the listening sessions could actually, it can be meaningful and, you know, in small enough chunks and that we could hear and decide if we needed to decide before Thursday. And that was part of it.
A month from now may be different from tonight, but anyhow.
Yeah. So. Okay, so we're saying we're not having a meeting on Thursday?
Or tomorrow.
Or tomorrow, or any other day this week.
Okay, yeah.
Do we need to table item 12?
Is then a kind of read, if we move to item 12, we'd have no more discussion on item 11.
Have we voted on 11?
We voted to continue discussion with the, not with the intent, with the, I'll read it back to me.
Read the motion.
We're going to defer action tonight, call for the election, no, I meant continue further discussion with the intent and consideration for an election in February. And this is not to be construed as a formal call, I wrote, for an election.
Take out intent. That was just my word because I knew that was the right word.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With consideration of, take out the intent and.
Right, of election, okay.
Yeah. Does that make sense? So we will continue discussion, hence the other discussions about when we would have other meetings and how to arrange those. I think staff can arrange that, talk to us, check our schedules. It's not an agenda item that we have for tonight to be able to call that because we didn't know we'd be needing that. All right. Item 12, discussion, consideration and possible action to engage the public finance law group, PLLC, as special bond counsel, and Oppenheim, a division of BOSE Inc., as financial advisor for possible public financing issues.
I'd recommend that we just pull that item and not, and take no action on it tonight.
I'm moving to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Harrod and second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call, roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned.
I got to get exactly what this.